I'd like to call this February 3rd meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, will you call the roll?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Mugler?
Here. Let the record show that we have six school board members in attendance tonight along with our Division Superintendent Dr. Jeffrey Smith, our school board attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, and our clerk, Ms. Carolyn Bowers, as well as members of our Division Leadership Team. We are also joined at the front table tonight by our student liaison, Mr. Thomas Perry, and I'm gonna turn things over to him.
Hello, everyone. I'm happy to be here today, and can I say how much we appreciate the school board?
Thank you.
As you can see, everyone left you all some little gifts. And today, we have Ms. Charlene Hall, who will be reading a little speech that she brought, introducing her family. Charlene?
Who doesn't love, who doesn't love Dr. Seuss? I certainly do. And I have read several of his books and find inspiration in all of them. I would like to share with you one of my favorite quotes. "The more that you read, the more things you'll know; the more that you learn, the more places you'll go." Dr. Seuss. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Charlene, thank you very much for our invocation tonight, and I understand you brought some people with you. Can you, would you like to make some introductions?
Sure. I brought my mom and my dad, my, my principal, my vice principal, and my homeroom teacher.
Nice contingency from Barron. Would you all stand and be recognized, please? Now, you are a 5th grade student at Barron, so after this semester, you'll go to middle school. Do you know where you're headed?
Um, I think I wanna go here to Jones.
Okay. I hope that works out. It's a great middle school. All right. Favorite subjects?
Um, science and reading.
Science. Awesome. Okay. Well, you'll go far with both of those avenues, for sure. Well, thank you very much for coming out tonight and starting off our meeting just right with some words of inspiration from Dr. Seuss. At this time, we'll move on to recognitions, and I'll call on our Division Executive Director of Public Relations and Marketing for the Division, Mrs. Diana Gallata, and she will be joined up front by...
Mr. Samuels.
Thank you. School Board member Jason Samuels.
Good evening. It's our pleasure this evening to recognize our National Board Certified Teachers. Through National Board Certification, teachers demonstrate that their teaching meets the profession's standards for accomplished practice through a rigorous, peer-reviewed, and performance-based process, similar to professional certification in fields such as medicine. In achieving board certification, teachers prove their ability to advance student learning and achievement. More than a decade of research from across the country confirms that students taught by board-certified teachers learn more than students taught by other teachers. Estimates of the increase in learning are equivalent to an additional one to two months of instruction. This year, we are proud to recognize Julie Back, science teacher at Kickitaine High School, who has earned certification for the first time.
Congratulations, Julie. And the inscription says, "National Board Certified Teachers, Julie Back, 2015."
Thank you so much.
Kelly Soden, gifted resource teacher, and Shirley Seipel, 3rd grade teacher at Cooper Elementary, also earned their renewal certification. Can you please come forward?
And once again, inscription says, "National Board Certified Teacher Renewal 2015."
Thank you very much.
Yes, I was told I needed to speak in the microphone. I was, "National Board Certified Teacher Renewal 2015." Thank you. Congratulations.
And if you have, if there are any family members or school support family, if you could stand for us, please. Governor McAuliffe has proclaimed February 2016 as School Board Appreciation Month to help build awareness of the crucial role school board members play in our communities and schools. Board members are extraordinary people who tackle the enormous job of governing school divisions. Their actions and decisions affect the present and future lives of our children, as well as our community as a whole. We sincerely appreciate everything our school board members do to support Hampton City Schools. Several Hampton City School students and schools have participated in a video produced by the HCS Television Staff to share their appreciation and thanks. Please roll the video.
Actually, I'm gonna improvise while we're waiting. I just wanted to let you know that you probably saw when you came up here, the very different gifts that were presented by several of our schools to you, and you did, that's, Ms. Henry, that's from Armstrong Elementary School. They made a self, a portrait of you making a snow angel.
They're all different, they're all original.
Yes, they did make one of every, every school board member, and...
The superintendent will not appreciate that we're making snow angels.
I know.
He doesn't want us to be doing that.
Probably not. So while we're waiting on the video, if Dr. Smith can come forward, and we'll prevent, we'll present the certificates, and then maybe the video will be ready to go after that.
I think it's ready.
Take a look at these photos. Have you seen these people before?
Oh, yeah, this is a school board.
This is a case before a school board. We met most of them.
Yeah. I met him.
I met all of them. I've met him before.
It's a group of people that come together for the city and discuss things about the school district. I think they make like rules for us, and they do, they try to keep us safe by doing things like telling them to lock the doors and all that, and making the new front building.
I think they help get the iPads and computers.
Thank you.
Yeah, just thank you a lot for keeping the school safe, doing everything you guys do, deciding how the school schedule runs, while still giving us what we need and what we want. Like, citizen of the month thing, with all that, that's when I first got to meet y'all, and it was amazing.
That's, I guess I would say, I'm really glad to be a citizen or a student at, in , within the Hampton City Schools network.
We appreciate you having the school board.
Serving as the student representative for this school board, I have had the opportunity to work with each of the school board members. I am appreciative for all of their different leadership styles that they bring to the table, and everything that they do to make sure that our school system is ran effectively. Thank you for your service, and we are appreciative for you. Thank you.
The school board members have helped me a lot. They've given me great advice when talking in front of people, when trying to organize things, they've given me great advice, and they've been a huge support throughout the whole process.
To all of the school board members, to all of you, I look up to every single one of you, and I wanna say thank you for everything that you do, not only here at Hampton High School, but also in Hampton City Schools.
I would like to thank the school board for allowing me the opportunity to be in the Governor's Health Sciences Academy, which allows me to study the career field that I plan on pursuing once I graduate from college. And I would also like to thank them for allowing me to take AP courses such as AP Physics, AP Calculus, and AP English, which will also help me prepare for college. I thank them for the teachers who they've hired to help push students and do the capabilities that they have each and every day.
We appreciate Hampton City School Board.
We hope you enjoyed that. Now, Dr. Smith is going to come forward and present each of you with a certificate of appreciation.
I'll read it first, and this is certainly from the Virginia School Boards Association. It says, "Certificate of Recognition Presented to, in this case, Mrs. Martha Mugler, in appreciation of your dedication and service to excellence in education on behalf of the students of the Commonwealth of Virginia. School Board Appreciation Month, February 2016, certainly signed by the President of the SBA and also the Executive Director." Congratulations, and thank you for your service. And likewise, Mr. Pearson, thank you for your leadership as well. Thank you. Mr. Harper, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, sir.
Commitment as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your leadership. Mr. Kilgore? Thank you for your service and commitment as well. Thank you. And last, but certainly not, please, Mr. Samuels, please stand and say thank you, say thank you as well, for your commitment and for your service. Thank you. I'm here to make certain that she receives her services. Again, thank you for your service and your commitment to the students and families of Hampton City. Thank you.
Now, it is my pleasure to turn the program over to our Board Chair, Mrs. Martha Mugler, for a special presentation.
The third week of February, we recognize our school board clerks across Virginia, and we in Hampton feel like we have the best school board clerk in the whole Commonwealth. Yay! And Carolyn Bowers is our clerk, and just a special note about her, she has been the clerk for this school division for 19 years. And she's worked for the school division longer than that, so she's, she's a pretty special person, but we really, truly appreciate all that you do for us as school board members to support us and to make sure that board docs are up and running, and that the public can see what is going to happen in our upcoming meetings, and, and all the other arrangements that you make for us as a school board behind the scenes. And so I have a proclamation to share with the public. Whereas the school board clerk in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, and whereas school board clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the school board, a record of all receipts and disbursements, and a record of all official acts, and whereas school board clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school board business of his or her county or city, as may be required by the school board, and whereas the school board clerks maintain frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media, on behalf of the school board and superintendent, and whereas school board clerks in the performance of their duty are often required to work extra hours attending school board meetings, just like this one, and many others, and whereas school board clerks join school boards to help ensure that students achieve their highest potential, and whereas school board clerks provide an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents, the VSB A Board of Directors does hereby recognize the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and whereas the Hampton School Board joins the VSB A in recognizing the many and varied contributions of school board clerks, now therefore be it resolved that at its meeting, on the fourth day of February, actually, this is the third day of February, isn't it?
Yes.
The clerk can keep me straight. She knows what day of the month it is. On this third day of February, the Hampton School Board recognizes the third week of February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, and I sign that resolution, that proclamation. Carolyn, would you come up? She doesn't, she's a behind-the-scenes person. She doesn't like to come up in front of everybody. I just wanna present you this certificate of appreciation in honor of your dedication and hard work to public education, and through your continued service to this division in particular, and just have just a little, some sweets for our sweet clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so that concludes our recognitions tonight. I do wanna say an extra congratulations and thank you to those National Board Certified Teachers and Recertifiers. We are very proud to have you as part of our, of our school division, and proud of the work and many hours and effort that goes into preparing for that particular certification. And also, congratulations to all of my fellow school board members, and celebration of this School Board Appreciation Month. We move now to the consent agenda, and it consists of two items, the Personnel Report 16-02, and Field Trips. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Henry that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to superintendent and staff reports, I'll turn things over at this time to our Division Superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start with our first report, and we'll ask members of Langley Elementary School to come forward, and I will ask that Dr. Haynes would come forward and introduce this particular report, or presentation, to the board. Dr. Haynes? Dr. Haynes serves as the, of course, Executive Director, who provides leadership and oversight for Langley Elementary, which is one of the schools, that he provides executive leadership. So, thank you, Dr. Haynes.
Good evening, Mrs. Mugler, Mr. Pearson, members of the board, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. I am pleased to present to you tonight, members of Langley Elementary School, home of the Leopards, where we have Mrs. Franks as the principal, and I'm gonna turn it over to her as she and her staff present on their English as a Second Language program.
Good evening again, Mrs. Mugler, Mr. Pearson, our school board, Dr. Smith. Again, I'm Elizabeth Franks, the principal at Langley Elementary, and tonight I have with me Patricia Clark, our Assistant Principal, Angie Raby, our Family Engagement Specialist, and Paula Hernandez, one of our phenomenal English as a Second Language teachers. Tonight, we are here to share with you a little bit about Langley Elementary and our English as a Second Language program. At Langley, we roar with pride. We are a professional learning community, which uses response to intervention and an inclusive environment, that is most important, providing data-driven, differentiated instruction to enrich the lives of all of our, all of our students, every child, every day, whatever it takes. We wanna take a moment, we have a few of our students who would like to say hello.
Hello, my name is Sarah, and I am the SEA president. I would like to welcome you to our school, Langley Elementary, and here's a hello from some of my friends.
Salaam aleikum.
Alaa.
Bonjour.
Namaste.
Ciao.
Ni hao.
Ciao.
Mokwai.
Say toko bi.
O jumbo.
Moshi moshi.
Bonjour.
Asala aleikum.
Jaya.
Aleikum assalam.
Jumbo.
Marhaba.
Aleikum assalam.
Hola.
Aleikum assalam.
At Langley Elementary, we are very diverse. We're very proud of that. A lot of people don't realize that our families at Langley Elementary come from 35 different countries and speak over 22 different languages. Some of our top languages, as far as the number of families that speak it, our top ones are Spanish, Arabic, Vietnamese, and new this year Somali, Swahili, excuse me, and some of our newest refugees are coming from places like Sudan and the Republic of the Congo. So lots of diversity at Langley, and we really are very proud of that.
ESL, it's our instructional support we provide at Langley for students who are English language learners or who have limited English proficiency. There are three types of ELL students. We have students who come from other countries and possess literacy skills in their native language, and that's what happened to me. When I came to the United States, I was literate in my own language, so it was easier for me to transfer the language, because I didn't have to learn the skills. We have students who come from other countries, but they never had the opportunity to go to school and learn in their own language, so at this stage, we teach them the skills and a new language. And then we have students that are born in the United States, but at home, they speak another language other than English, or a dialect. When our students are right up Langley, we use the WIDA assessment and SOLs to provide insight on how we can address their needs. We administer the WIDA assessment based on four components, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Students receive a composite score that allows them to be assigned to a level. So if you see, we have Level 1 that will be entering. At this stage, students do not speak the language. Level 2, they're emerging, that means their receptive language is activated, they can understand somewhat of what you're saying. But Level 3, they already have that social language, and that's when we work with, on their academic support or academic language. Level 4 and 5, Level 4, they're expanding, they're starting to get to the level of their peers, and Level 5, they're bridging, they're about to exit the program.
Our English language learners at Langley make up roughly about 40% of our population. Thus far this year, 24 of our students are refugees. The Level 1s that Ms. Hernandez was mentioning are those that are just learning English, they're coming in with no English experience. About 35% of that 40% ELL population are Level 1 students. And then you can see, as we move through the levels, Level 2 is about 12% of our ELL students, and then Level 3 and Level 4, and then Level 5, we have about 13%. And then after they exit the program, we monitor them for two years after that. So we have Year 1 and Year 2 monitors, and they also are in that 13%. Of our ELL students, 17 of them are also receiving special education services. At Langley, we are very proud of our successes with all of our students, our ELL learners and our all students. We are fully accredited, we've maintained accreditation, and it really goes to our high expectations for all students in our inclusive atmosphere. We have effective teachers who care about every child's learning. They really look to and look for ways to meet each individual student's needs. But really, it's our culture that really grasps anybody who comes in, our culture of diversity. You walk through the halls, you can go into a classroom cafeteria, and you see students who wanna learn about each other, want to learn from each other and with each other. It doesn't matter where they came from. You can see it, you hear it, you feel it. It really is who we are at Langley. And to ensure that we get to our success, we have created, we follow our plan, we call it our Pride Plan, because every child's success every single day is our ultimate goal. And we look at that to ensure that we have the right professional development pieces for our teachers, so they have those skills, those strategies, to reach their ELL students as well as all populations in their classroom. We look at ensuring that we tier our individual students, so if a student needs additional support, that that is provided. Our biggest focus is to ensure that inclusion piece in the classroom, and immersion for all of our students. So students are in the classroom with all peers as much as possible, and they might get those very specific, specify, those supports in the classroom, very little pullout.
Again, at Langley, one of our greatest glows is our high academic and behavioral expectations. We have great success at Langley in, in serving all of our students who are on the SOL track and inclusive environments, including our English language learners, as well as our students with disabilities. We also have great success using response to intervention, which is a process that Ms. Franks will talk about in just a moment. At Langley, we've also had wonderful success using positive behavioral intervention and support. Langley began using the PBIS process about six years ago, when the Virginia Department of Education had its first cohort. Back then, it was called Effective School-Wide Discipline. And so at Langley, our students learn very quickly, whether they come from other countries or whether they come from our neighboring cities of Newport News or anywhere, they learn very quickly how to roar. We have a few staff members here who want to show you real quickly how we roar at Langley. Langley staff, let's go.
Respectful, organized, appropriate, responsible. Langley Leopards Roar.
Thank you, Langley staff. And our students learn very quickly that no matter what environment they are in, the cafeteria, the recess, anywhere, they know what roar looks like, what being... the recess, anywhere, they know what roar looks like, what being respectful, organized, appropriate, and responsible looks like in all those environments.
When we're going back to response to intervention, and when Langley, when we think about it, we do think on the behavior side and we think on the academic side because it takes both to look at the whole child, to ensure that they're getting everything that they need. So, of course, our roar expectations is a big piece of that. And when we look at this, what are we doing for all students? And because such a large percentage of our population are ELL, are ELL learners, they, we have to look at different strategies that will reach their needs, visual, dialoguing with peers, very much, you know, step back from some of the very directive to ensuring that students have opportunities to dialogue. And we ensure that we give our teachers time to do those planning pieces so we can hit those Tier One students what's best for as many students, all students. And then, we come down the continuum when we have those very identified learners. When we see Tier Two for our ELLP students, that may be a very small group for push-in services where they may get some front-loading for some of those academic skills. They hear some of that academic language before it's introduced in the Tier One instruction. Or it may be where for our students who are just coming to us, who have been in the country less than a year, we might provide what we call newcomer services. So, we're really working on some of those social cues, where to go in the building, maybe some of those immediate language pieces so they can interact with their peers more comfortably. And then, of course, as we continue down the continuum, we might have very individualized, focused, both academic instructional pieces and maybe behavior plans.
So, our ESL program focuses in listening, speaking, reading, writing, or language literacy and comprehension. Right here, we're going to see one of our students. He came to us in September. The video was, it was taken October, and he was a Level One. Again, he didn't speak the language. And you're going to see how successful he is now by being with us for like a month or so.
This is a cat. Look like.
Are these llamas? Llamas?
Elephant.
Elephant. Did you ever ride on an elephant?
Yes.
Did you get on the back of an up? You did?
Yeah. I'm so happy.
You were happy. Were you scared?
No.
Because he's very big.
Yeah.
But you were not scared.
Mouse like this and like this. This is it. And he helped suit this me like this. This is so. Then up.
Oh, he helped lift you up?
Yeah.
This is his trunk, nose. It looks like a nose, but it's his trunk. And he lifted you up with his trunk?
Yes.
Wow.
That was second grade, and when he came to migrate level third grade, he was able to pass the SOL for math, and he got really close to reading. So, we're very proud of him.
In order to make sure that we are reaching every child's needs, we do, we have maintained commitment and fidelity to our professional learning community. We really focus on our collaborative learning teams, and we ensure we have time, the correct, the right personnel are there on a bi-weekly basis. Our phenomenal staff sit down and they bring student work. They bring different pieces so we can collaborate, whether they're a classroom teacher or specialist. Every child is owned by every adult at that grade level in our building, and I think that's really what makes a difference for our school.
As I mentioned before, we do have great diversity, wonderful student climate. We have such appreciation in our building for differences. If you come in, you just kind of can feel it when you're walking around and you see all of the children, you know, really just appreciating each other. You see that everywhere you go in our building. We welcome our new refugee students. We have lots of support in place for them. We provide resources for our families, and we really like to celebrate our diversity. One of our favorite things that we do every year is International Night where our families actually come and set up tables to highlight their cultures, and they come in their native attire. And it's a wonderful, wonderful experience that I would definitely invite all of you to come and attend. I believe this year, we're having it in April. So, we really celebrate that, the diversity in our building. We also have great staff and community collaboration. We have a wonderful staff that really understands our population. They, as Ms. Franks mentioned, it's our students. There is no my students in our building. Every single child belongs to every single adult in the building, and we really work together that way to ensure success. We have a very strong PTA. We have a staff-funded family fund. Our teachers pay at the beginning of the year for the privilege of wearing jeans on Fridays, and we put that money into a family fund that we use to help support some of our families in need. Some of the things that we've done with that, we had a little boy come to us from Honduras who could not see, literally could not see, and they did not have resources. So, we used the family fund and through the support of the teachers, we were able to get him appointments to be seen, to get diagnosed, to get his glasses. And my, one of my favorite stories is when he saw Ms. Hernandez, really saw her for the first time, he commented on how curly her hair was. So, he really is now seeing the world brand new. We have very strong family involvement. Even our families who have limited English feel very comfortable coming into the building and participating in events. We have an angel tree that we sponsor every year. Again, our teachers, our community members are adopting children from our school and helping them to have gifts around the holiday that they may not have been able to have otherwise. And we have, we're fortunate enough to be able to use Language Line and interpreters to help us communicate with our families, which we find is one of our biggest challenges at Langley. The children learn very quickly, but the parents sometimes have a hard time. So, we are very lucky to be able to have those resources, and we use them and the teachers use them. And then, our community partnerships, again, they understand our school. They give us invaluable resources of their time. They come into the building and they really help our school be more successful. And these are some of our newest students from the Congo. Again, they came in as a Level One, and this was just a couple of weeks after they first came to us, not speaking any English. So, we'll take a look.
T, H, I, J, K, M, N, O, N, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, and Z.
Very good, very good.
Zero.
Now, I want to ask you a question. What is your name?
My name is Jason.
Ask her.
What is your name?
My name is Nadma.
Ask her.
What is your name?
My name is Riggo. What is your name?
My name is Ranch.
Ask me.
What is your name?
My name is Ms. Lee. How old are you?
I'm nine years old.
Ask her.
How old are you?
I'll take order.
I am?
I am ten old.
Ten years.
Years old.
Good.
How, how old are you?
We want to thank you for having us here this evening so we could share a little bit about Langley, where we roar with pride for every child, every day, whatever it takes. We certainly want to invite you out. We do quarterly parent chats, community chats. Anybody's welcome to come, visit us in our building and meet our kiddos. So, thank you again for tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the report. Are there questions or comments from board members, Mrs. Henry?
Thank you for a wonderful report. Just, you know, the children make you smile every day, I know. Twenty-four refugees this year, is that about normal for every year?
No, we, it goes in ebbs and flows.
Up and down?
Mm-hmm. It all depends on what's happening in the community.
If the newest refugees are most likely in Level One or Two?
Traditionally, yes.
And how long does it take them to get to Level Four in general? Year and a half, two?
If we look at our historical data and we're looking at students who come in, and this would be looking at all students who come in at Level Ones or Twos, usually by two years, about ninety-five percent of our students are moving into Level Three or almost Level Four. So, we traditionally move them through fairly quickly.
Well, I know, it isn't like they come, if they all came in kindergarten, first grade, it would be a snap, you know, but if they come at ten and you're catching them up with their peers, that's a lot more difficult because there's a lot more to catch them up.
The difference is the academic language piece. We usually, you know, we have to start back with working on those underlining skills to continue to build up, but no matter what, what we have found works more than anything else, it's that immersion piece. So, they do, although they might be a Level One, sitting in our fifth grade classroom, and they are responsible for the math SOL, science SOL this year, and, you know, reading and social studies within one year after that. We find that they really do pick that up and we have to focus, but we still, we're very focused on that content piece as we move up that continuum.
Well, I congratulate you for making inclusion a reality and something that works for the children. I think, I remember twenty-five, thirty years ago, we tended to put a child in ESL and they stayed there. They were still there in middle school. They were still there in high school. It's because they were isolated from their peers, and that's how they learn all that social language, right, very, very fast. So, by you putting them in an inclusion setting and then supporting them with what they need in that classroom, you're doing such a wonderful job, and I really want to commend you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that.
Yes, Mr. Pearson?
Ms. Franks, of course, I enjoy being seated with you and your students during the citizens' lunch, and I do plan to come and visit them one day during lunch. But my question is this. You mentioned that after students complete Level Five, I think you mentioned that they are still being monitored.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me. Who's responsible for the monitoring and how is it achieved when the student is not in your building anymore?
That is done through our ESL department with Mrs. Summers, and she works with personnel who she assigns to come out and do the monitoring. So, we have a few monitoring students at our school, and so, somebody would come in and do that, and our teachers also articulate that. And then, for other schools around the division, she assigns individuals to go out and do that work.
Mr. Harper?
First, I'd like to give props to the cheering squad. Almost felt like spanking a football, which Carolina's going to do Sunday, matter of fact. But to you ladies, I have to commend you. The PBIS, some facets of that could work in regular school because some of our kids, although it's not an ESL situation, they have a lot of problems, maybe grasping some of the stuff that teachers are trying to put on them. You know, you guys seem to take kids that don't even speak English and have them be able to achieve things, and I'd say record amount of times, but maybe we might want to look at some of those things that you guys do over, spread out of our regular schools. If they work, they work. Kids learn, they learn. And I'd like to just commend you guys. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. We do appreciate that, and that really goes to the work of our staff, our teachers, and that consistency in modeling and utilizing our student leaders in the classrooms to model those behaviors.
I have a comment, Ms. Franks. I tremendously enjoy visiting Langley. I just take so much great pride when I visit Langley and I see so many children from so many different countries and hear all the different dialects. And it goes back to this community, how diverse this community is, and yet, we welcome individuals from so many different countries. And I wish I had the opportunity to attend a school such as Langley when I first came to the United States. And because each year, when I, each time when I visit Langley, I learn so, so much. And it's because of your leadership abilities and skills, and I just want to commend you and for your efforts and for your work, and I, and I'm expecting you to provide some professional development this summer. And if you do so, please send me an invite that I can come and attend and learn some of the things that you're doing, the dynamic things you're doing at Langley.
I certainly appreciate it. Thank you so much, and please know, you are welcome anytime. Everybody is. We are just, you know, it's definitely a place everybody wants to be. We wake up, we are excited to go in. It's not a job, it's our life, and the kids are our life. So, thank you.
Mr. Kilgore?
Thank you, Ms. Franks, for your presentation. I probably can be accused of being biased a little bit about Langley. I actually am very blessed. All three of my children went through Langley. I know how special it is. My son now lives in China teaching English, so ironic as that is, but I moved to the part of Hampton that I live now so that my kids could go to Langley. So, I know how special you are, and I just want to thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore, and I'll just comment on the fact that his partiality is that the head cheerleader of the Roar Chair is his spouse.
I said I could be biased.
Long time, longtime teacher at Langley Elementary School, and so, you know, I just can't reiterate enough the many complimentary things that our board members have said tonight. We, we did a school board field trip to your school earlier in the year at my suggestion, and a number of us were able to get there, and we had such a great feeling about that. Ms. Franks, at that time, you gave an incredible presentation to the board members that came to school at Langley to visit, and I have to say, we've been on a number of what we call school board field trips. I guess we've been going on them for about three years now, and in my, all of the visits I've made, I found your presentation to be the most outstanding. And maybe it's because I love Langley so much myself. I have two children who attended Langley and did very well there and were dearly embraced at Langley, and certainly, the evidence of the foundation they received there has been grounding for them in their school careers. And I usually don't talk about my own children in board meetings because most people know me that. It usually makes me cry. So, I'll really, I just want to say one little real brief thing about my daughter who attended Langley and spent a lot of time with all the wonderful English second language students there. And she's a senior this year, and of course, most parents who have seniors know that there's this horrendous thing that you have to assist your children in making sure they fill out their college applications. And my daughter was writing an essay for one of her college entrance applications, and her essay really focused on the diversity of this particular university's campus. And I can only know that that hearkens back to her having attended Langley and the exposure that she had to so many languages and cultures there. So, anyway, our kudos to you, and thank you so much for coming back to visit us in this larger venue. We wanted to make sure that our whole community could hear more about what's going on, the great work that you're doing at Langley.
Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Dr. Smith?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, last, Dr. Cagiano. Thank you. Dr. Cagiano, our deputy superintendent for curriculum and instruction will provide the board with a report and present to you really information regarding the current work in his department and the progress that they have made or that we've made in a collective way. And so, Dr. Cagiano, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And before I begin, I would like to recognize, Ms. Franks mentioned Ms. Summers. She's in the back. Ms. Summers is here with us this evening, as well as one of her tutors, a former retired teacher, Ms. Naomi Chapel. So, thank you for joining us and supporting the presentation.
Well, good evening, good evening, Ms. Mugler, Madam Chair, Mr. Pearson, members of the board, Dr. Smith. The purpose of this presentation is to share some of the work members of the Department of Curriculum and Instruction have been engaged in over the first six months of the school year. And so, really, tonight, as far as an emphasis for this presentation, we'll be talking a little bit about how we and what steps we're taking in that department to ensure a guaranteed and viable curriculum and really within a systems approach or within aligned acts of improvement. You all, I know, are very familiar with this particular graphic here. It depicts certainly our 2020 Division Strategic Plan, the strategic focus model, and highlights our six-goal areas. And when we look at the core of that, this department, curriculum and instruction certainly plays an integral role in the work related to maximizing every child's learning. Dr. Smith, as we're all aware, has been very busy over the last six months. He's embarked on his Look, Listen, and Learn Tour, and this graphic that he, and you see it, that kind of... And this graphic that he, and you see it, that kind of morphed out of the core of the strategic plan has evolved, I think, throughout that six-month period. And some of the conversations that he's had with us as a division leadership team along the way started earlier prior to the creation of this graphic. And I think initially, the conversations really centered around a systems approach. And you can see a number of the focus areas for him certainly touch on the Department of Curriculum and Instruction and talk about and address teaching and learning. But again, tonight, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on our department and its approach to a systems approach in our role, as well as a guaranteed and viable curriculum. So, you know, after the conversation with division leadership team with Dr. Smith, then going back and kind of embarking upon our own Look, Listen, and Learn Tour, particularly my new role with this department. And so where do we as a department fit in with this system, with our organization? So some of what you see that here, Dr. Smith has outlined in detail in his report. And so we had conversations as a department, curriculum leaders, you know, talking about silo thinking. Where does that, does that play a role currently in our daily duties? Where do we exist in the organization? And so, a lot of conversation about why do we exist as a department? What's our role? And that really led us to the next slide here. Actually, it led us to the slide after this. But continuing the conversation about a systems approach, we began to talk openly and honestly. There are some things that we're doing. So for example, in Grade Three, when we provide written curriculum documents to teachers, it may be that math in their pacing guide asks a Grade Three teacher at four and a half weeks into the first marking period to address measurement, while in science for the Grade Three teacher, she's covering it during the third marking period. So from an aligned acts of improvement standpoint, does it make a little more sense for the teacher to perhaps take a horizontal approach, interdisciplinary approach, and put that in the same part of, from a pacing standpoint? And so then, then we wanted to formalize some of the conversations we were having. And I've supplied a graphic to each of you if you can't see it on the screen here. But really, we started with the why. Why do we exist? Where do we fall in this system? And so the department mission is the why. So we exist for this purpose, and then the vision is where we're headed. And so quite a bit of time spent on the mission and then the vision. I'll talk a little bit more in depth about the vision. And then we said, you know, looking at focus areas, you've heard Dr. Smith mention C equals I equals A. Curriculum equals instruction equals assessment. I think you'll see that theme here. So when we look at these four focus areas, the first one, developing written curriculum that is aligned to standards and a variety of student learning needs. And that's been the focal point for the first six months and to be honest, looking ahead to the next six months as well. So tight alignment. State gives us a curriculum framework document, and we need to ensure and guarantee, and we'll talk more about that, that when we put that document in teachers' hands, that we're guaranteeing that the intended learning outcomes from the state coming down to us, that we've unpacked the standards so that we've identified the appropriate cognitive level of the standard, whether or not the content is aligned. Some teachers now, to be honest, we have in certain situations where a teacher's sitting down planning perhaps Sunday evening, and they have two documents in front of them. They have a curriculum framework document from the state because they don't want to make sure they miss it, and then they have our document in front of them. And so the conversation was they shouldn't need to, that we should be able to ensure that we have a tightly aligned document. And then, of course, the part two of number one is the variety of learning needs. So whether that's enrichment, differentiation, remediation, we need to include in that written guide that we're providing teachers as a resource, strategies, opportunities, and build it in for remediation, for enrichment. The second piece in there, so you have the C, move to the I, instruction. What's our role as a department in developing teachers' understanding and skills to deliver and align taught curriculum effectively? So it's one thing to do a quality job with a written product, put it in your hands. It's another thing to make sure that we have teachers, from a zero teacher as far as scale, first-year teacher to a 30-year vet, to ensure that teachers know exactly how to take the information that we've unpacked and to deliver that in an effective manner. Then moving on to assessment, develop tested curriculum and use results to inform written and taught curriculum. One of the conversations we've had has been that we did some looking at other divisions' documents and what do we like, what do we not like? And we found out we like a lot about what we have in ours, but there's always room for growth. One of the things we came upon was in the area of assessment, why not do a little more handholding and let teachers know that above and beyond a multiple choice test, these are some different ways, strategies for assessing students along the way. And then four was a big one, which really, you can't emphasize enough and really is applicable to the other three, and that's the communication piece. So, you know, curriculum instruction and assessment, but what's our role as a division to communicate that? Not only how we put it out, but how we work and develop teachers' understanding. So we spent quite a bit of time on focus area four as well. So then what we did, the next step, again, I'm giving you the timeline here as we move on the first six months. We said, well, what really is the meat behind each of these? What are the detailed action steps? So I won't go through all of those. We've drafted four sets of action steps for each of these focus areas thus far, and we've gotten and sought feedback and input only on the first focus area so far, and that's written curriculum. And so internal stakeholders, and these were the big priorities that cropped up here. Some I've already mentioned. And then you can imagine, number one, there's a lot that goes with number one, as with two through six. And so there are detailed action plans. Some have occurred and some are in draft form related to one through six. And I'll touch on a few of those. Number two there, determine big ideas for units that prioritize standards and essential knowledge and skills. When that curriculum framework document comes down from the state, when I started teaching in the mid-'90s, we received just a bulleted list of kind of overarching standards. Teacher said to the state, we need to, we need to know a little bit more, what exactly do you mean by this? And so they came out with these documents which explicitly delineated these very discrete skills. And in this nature of accountability, one of the unintended consequences is teachers are quick to go to those discrete skills and say, let me make sure my boys and girls have this, this, this. But sometimes we don't look at the overarching standard and put it in that context. And so the other thing was when you look at that right-hand column from the state, it says essential knowledge. Well, there's no way that everything can be essential. And so what we're talking about now, and you'll see it determined in a minute, power standards. How do we prioritize based on what we believe students need to be successful for the next grade as far as college career life and ready, and life ready? And then also, from an assessment standpoint, what do the data say? Do we have areas for improvement based on data? So we'll talk a little bit about that as well. Four and six are big. I mentioned six really follows with the communication piece, and then four, seeking input from teachers along the way. So for example, in March, we'll be meeting with one fifth-grade teacher from each school, and we'll be talking a little bit about prioritization of standards, these power standards. What do you see as power standards? Here's what we see as curriculum leaders, teacher specialists. Let's meet in the middle. And then from there, where do we take that? If, for example, with Dr. Smith's idea this year, we've implemented curriculum forecast emails. And so for grades three through eight and end-of-course tests, twice a quarter, teachers receive additional resources, supplemental resources to support some of the standards either based on data or what we deem to be power standards. We know students need to be successful, where they receive some additional information. So you can see I could probably talk for three hours just on this, but there are a number of action steps, and we look forward to sharing that with staff in the very near future. As we move to the vision, and really is kind of the how. So our department mission is the why, the vision is the how. And the next steps regarding our vision is we believe that, this is not an exhaustive checklist. So there are a number of research-based instructional strategies that we would like to say as a department that we vetted, that we highly endorse. And so if you look at the what, the next step is developing a list of those. So getting into the research, when we look at alignment, purposeful instruction, higher-order thinking, active engagement on the part of students, feedback, well, what are the strategies that I as a teacher can use? We're not saying these are mandated, but these are opportunities to expand your toolbox. These will be things that we'll be building into the five-year professional development plan as well. And it's not something that we look to next year and say that, you know what, we're going to focus on all of these next year. It may be that it's one, two, and three. And so again, as we continue to seek input from stakeholders and get into the research, we look forward to the development and sharing where we're headed exactly with instructional priorities for the coming school year. The next piece then, guaranteed and viable curriculum. We have gotten into the research as a department, and these are a couple of the sources that we've taken a look at. And this is not new work, as you see by the quote on the left dating back to 1967 and certainly before then. In reference to the quote on the right, "The purpose of a functional curriculum is to focus and connect the work of teachers." I mentioned the horizontal alignment. We've had some conversations about that, so interdisciplinary nature. The vertical alignment is something else. At the middle school level, if we have a group of eighth-grade teachers, we bring in over the summer to write curriculum. Seventh grade and sixth grade, sometimes we put them in separate rooms. Why not give them opportunities to talk a little bit about how certain skills, particularly power standards, spiral? And so as we look to this summer, to bring in folks to perhaps revise some of our curriculum, we're certainly looking at horizontal alignment and vertical alignment. And then just the utility of the documents themselves. I mentioned looking at other school divisions, both in the state and out of the state, and some of their templates. And there were some ahas in some of the retreats we've had as a department where, again, we like this, we like this, what we're currently doing. We never thought about presenting it this way to teachers, looking through the lens of a first-year teacher. That makes complete sense. And so we're excited about the development with that particular piece as well. So some of the work we've done this year has been with Dr. Chris Garies from the College of William &amp; Mary. And he uses the metaphor when talking about curriculum, is looking at it as your closet. And so this quote here, sometimes the trap that educators can fall into is we get this curriculum framework document from the state, and it comes down really in silos. So math gets these documents, history, these documents, and again, you have all these discrete skills. It really, it's a division's job then to take these documents and say, how do we, what makes sense for us? If we think about, you know, what are the characteristics of a graduate in Hampton City Schools, whether it's fifth grade, eighth grade, or moving on 12th grade? And so if you were to go, and when you get dressed in the morning and look in your closet, you don't say, I'm just going to take the shirt. You say, I'm going to pick out that shirt, I'm going to go with that tie, and I like that jacket. And so we're putting different things together where it makes sense. And sometimes, again, an unintended consequence of the error of accountability is we pick these discrete skills and we focus on these with not really helping new teachers, novice teachers, or kids for that matter in some instances, to make sense and make connections. And so when we look at perhaps revising some of our curriculum, it's with that mindset framework, where does it make sense? So one of the priorities you saw was a big idea. So if this is the big idea of the unit, and these are power standards within the unit, again, there are going to be some things we cover that, but they're not necessarily essential. So that's, again, some of the work that we've embarked upon the first quarter. Mentioned the term power standards. This is kind of our operational definition of a power standard. And you kind of see the CIA here. And so the first piece here, as we're working, and this is still in draft mode, but if we look at the portrait of a graduate of Hampton City Schools or the portrait of a fifth grader, eighth grader, 12th grader, what are those traits we want to see? Not only 21st century skills, but academic in nature. And so those might be certain skills where we look back in the curriculum and we say, you know what, that's a power standard. That's something that we need to emphasize. When we provide that written document to teachers, we need to make sure that is bold. We have it very explicit, resources provided, it's well-thought-out. And so there's no doubt in anyone's mind that that's an area of emphasis. Importance to the discipline itself, important to the vertical sequence of the curriculum. I talked about that, relevant to other areas. And then there are going to be some things that, just based on the data. It could be that there's a particular reporting category in a subject area that the state waits heavily. So we want to make sure we address that appropriately. And so we look forward to, again, what we believe is, from a servant leadership standpoint, helping teachers with a written curriculum document, again, looking through the lens of a first-year teacher, putting an enhanced document in their hands. So guaranteed and viable, this has also been around for quite some time. And in his work with Dr. Marzano, Schools Translating Research, What Works in Schools, Translating Research into Action. So we wanted just to share a little bit more about guaranteed and viable, and what is the meaning of this in Hampton City Schools? Because there are several ways that you can interpret this. So, and in his research, Marzano talks about guaranteed, the opportunity to learn, the opportunity to learn, and then viable time to learn. So if we break each of these down a little bit further. So guaranteed, do all teachers have a shared understanding of the intended learning outcomes for students? So we see that, one of our responsibilities as a department, when we have to ensure that document we put in a first-year teacher's hands, we're guaranteeing that you don't need two documents to plan from, that we've done our job, we've unpacked standards appropriately, and we're guaranteeing you that this document here covers and prioritizes the intended learning outcomes and what we believe in Hampton City Schools are important for our students. Our standards unpacked at the appropriate level. I talked about that already. Do all students have access to learning the intended learning outcome? So really, it shouldn't matter what school a child goes to, what teacher a child has, at a minimum, that the document that they're planning from should contain the same knowledge content and skills. Now, it's not to say we're not taking into account differentiation or meeting individual kids' needs, but at a minimum, we're making that guarantee that that should be there. You heard Ms. Franks in the presentation before talk about how ESL teachers don't go to a classroom and pull students out. Back in the day at Langley, some time ago, that did happen. With Dr. Smith's message to principals has been clear, at core instruction, tier-one instruction, we have to guarantee that all students have access to that. So if we're going to double-dose and provide remediation, we need to find another time to do that. We can't pull students out of tier-one instruction. So the viable piece, is the intended curriculum taught in a way that is conducive to learning? So time to teach, time to teach logical alignment to the standards of learning, high-yield instructional strategies. I've talked about the second two. The first one there, from a pacing standpoint, so if the state is telling us we're, this percentage of the assessment on Grade A science is, let's just say, 38%, obviously it's heavily weighted, so from a pacing standpoint, we need to guarantee and viability for teachers that we're allotting ample amount of time through pacing. And so when we provide you as a teacher with that written document, that that's taken into account.
Dr. Cagiano?
Yes, sir.
Is viability based on test scores?
Viability based on test scores. If we look at providing a guaranteed and viable curriculum, you can look at it, you know, a number of different ways. As far as in reference to test scores, there's certainly, you know, a connection there. For us, it's, if we put in the curriculum documents, for example, high-yield strategies. If we put high-yield strategies in the curriculum document, we're explicit about when and where and how particularly you can use that. We provide PD on that. I mean, you know, the connection is certainly that we believe will impact scores, and that would be a byproduct of quality teaching and learning.
And that's, it becomes, it's one aspect of it.
Thank you. I thought there had to be a connection.
All right. So in summary, as far as Dr. Marzano's work, the first school-level factor is a straightforward one. I mean, the research clearly supports implementing a curriculum that is both guaranteed and viable. Yet enacting it is one of the most significant challenges currently facing U.S. schools. So, you know, in a division our size, again, going back to the beginning of the presentation, what the systems approach, the aligned acts of improvement, what's our role and through a servant leadership philosophy, of really putting quality documents in teachers' hands, providing quality PD assessments that can be used to gauge where learners are, to impact teaching and learning. And then, again, the communication piece and how we go about working with our stakeholders. So we've accomplished, I think, quite a bit in amount of six months, and some of this has not been shared yet with all of our internal stakeholders. We have a plan of action in place for that and excited about where we're continuing with the work to impact teaching and learning at Hampton City Schools. This time, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cagiano. I've seen Mrs. Henry over here writing and writing and writing. We'll start with you.
Okay. I think there are a lot of wonderful things that you said today that I hope will happen in a teacher's life. One is, I've read all those SOL and the curriculum things, and they are, they're like FileMaker Pro went berserk and printed all the paper in the copier. They go like this, and they do send a silo information. When the state does stuff like, essential knowledges are here and essential skills are here, like they don't have anything to do with each other, it's weird. And so I appreciate that you are going to get away from a million documents that all look the same and that you're going to get away from the silo thinking. And I hope you maybe write narratives for teachers. You've got an English teacher superintendent, I bet he's in on that. You know, stuff in a paragraph makes sense to people sometimes, even a Venn diagram instead of the slices of something that go up and down the paper. So I'm really pleased that you said, one thing that's going to be very important to teachers, one document. Not two, not three, not six, one. Do away with the silos, and for goodness sakes, let teachers coordinate. We have to do something with our benchmarks to make them flexible so that I can teach measurement at the same time the science teacher is taking, doing measurement and not say, oh, no, I have to do it in this nine weeks, and she has to do it in the third nine weeks because it's, that's when it's going to show up in the benchmark test. So if you can do all that, you're going to make a whole lot of happy teachers. And it's really going to make things more logical, and the presentation that you do in class is going to work better and flow better. And so I'm really pleased with all that. When we talk about the philosophy and the approach for this, reality is when it gets to be hard. You know, it's all nice to say, we're going to do this. And I know when you write plans, you write goals, and you write action steps. And I know, when you write plans, you write goals, and you write action steps, the sticking point is always evaluation. How are you going to clone yourself and all the curriculum leaders and all the principals, so that they have time to really, really evaluate? Because the evaluation is the key to having this done, having it be successful, and also having it go back into the process of refining what you're doing.
Yeah, I mean, the ultimate evaluation, I think, certainly would be based on student learning outcomes, and that would be number one. Number two, again, I can't hammer home enough, the communication standpoint. And so, one thing we've done, I think, when, and you know this, Ms. Henry, when in writing curriculums, a lot of times, we go to those veteran teachers or all-star teachers, teachers who demonstrated success with kids, and they come around the table and write, but we don't often seek input from a lot of others. And so, we had a meeting today, in fact, in reference to the use of Adobe Connect. Adobe Connect is a powerful web conferencing software system that we'll be able to use. So, we talked about, for example, if revisions are, not going to be made everywhere, but if revisions are made to first grade, for example, where we want some input, then there'll be a webinar on this date, if you'd like to call in or participate in the webinar and talk, and seek feedback from teachers, for example, on the phone via the system, it's recorded, that's emailed out to first-grade teachers, a link for anyone to watch and view. So, you know, looking for opportunities for feedback from stakeholders, I think, to me, when we have teachers coming to us saying that, "You know what, this has made my life easier," number one, but number two, when I look at preparation, it makes a little more sense, I understand that, and it's impacting teaching and learning. So, a long answer to your question, I think, one, student learning outcomes, and then, number two, it's the internal stakeholders and feedback from teachers.
All that feedback is critical. And, you know, it's, curriculum alignment doesn't sound very sexy and exciting, but it really is when you get teachers together, and they talk about it, and they feel empowered to do something about it to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Samuels?
I'm going to be brief, I have two questions.
Sure.
And first, John, I've been reading your book, that you co-authored, on formative assessment leadership.
Impressed, thank you, Mr. Samuels.
Yes. So, I have two questions, you know, from reading a few chapters in your book. So, when you think about system's approach, first question, how does formative assessment add values to curriculum alignment? Second question, what goals are accomplished through formative assessment?
Could you repeat the first question?
How does formative assessments add values to curriculum alignment?
I think, when you look at focus area number three here, again, another unintended consequence of the air of accountability has been this over-reliance on multiple-choice assessments. And we saw that and heard that from the state, too, with our academic reviews. So, as the curriculum leaders and teacher specialists looked at our current documents, one area, and we looked at other templates from other divisions as well, one thing we noticed was the opportunity to incorporate more formative assessments. So, formative versus summative, summative, of course, is shared in the book. Formative versus summative, summative, we think of as the endgame, Super Bowl, formative more practice and getting feedback along the way. So, teachers with formative assessment are looking for divisions to provide guidance on what are some types of formative assessment strategies? And so, the conversations we've had to date have been around, well, let's just be explicit about it and put it in the curriculum document. So, we're going to create some strategies. So, for example, at the elementary level and looking at reading, the talk has been created, so what we're referring to is reading probes at various points. So, all you would need to do next year is, these reading probes have been created, you click on the link that's in your curriculum document, and it takes you to the reading probe, and it gets into why this, try this, students need to be able to do this. And so, and being very explicit, particularly with a power standard. So, we thought about starting, that's an ambitious task, but starting with the power standards first, and looking for opportunities to increase formative assessment. My kid, he's eight years old, my boy, my youngest, and loves sports, just getting into sports, and he loves games, not practice, not so much. And we had the conversation not too long ago, that if you show up for the game and not having had practice, think about everything you learned from the coach during practice. If you wait until the SOL test to measure that success, you know, there's so many things we can do along the way. So, that's a great question, and it's something school systems grapple with, so we say, "Why not leave anything to chance, let's just put it out there for you, we'll do the work." And then, of course, we need to provide training along those lines. And what was the second question?
Second question, what goals are accomplished through formative assessments?
What goals are accomplished? I think, when you look at the heart of our strategic plan, as far as that goal of one, maximizing every child's learning, to me, it's a formative assessment is assessment for learning versus assessment of learning. So, if I'm a teacher on the fly, there are formative assessment strategies that I do that, rather than wait till I administer a quiz or a test, that I'm changing instruction as students are raising their hands, raising a board, I'm checking in with students. I've got segments of my lesson where I'm embedding a formative assessment strategy. So, rather than waiting a long time, it's a time saver. So, to me, a big goal is that I'm impacting individual kids, teaching and learning. You saw the cahoot, you know, come up before the board with the one-to-one as an example of a formative assessment strategy. As a teacher with an iPad in front of me, I can see students' results as soon as I've covered a topic, and then maybe before I move on to the next one, based on these results, that I'm stopping and going back. And so, it's a more purposeful and strategic way to teach, as opposed to just testing at the end of the unit, and let's see what we get. Great questions, Mr. Samuels, thank you.
Other comments?
Great book.
Oh, thank you very much.
Other questions or comments from board members? Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Caggianno.
All right, thank you.
We look forward to the outcomes that this ambitious plan produces.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Smith?
Yes, Madam Chair, we'll move to, again, thank you, Dr. Caggianno. Dr. Cooper will share with members of the board an accountability update, and as she's pulling that up, I might also add that when you have a very strong formative assessment program, you will look forward to measure certainly the effectiveness of the curriculum, as well as the instructional delivery, so.
Good evening, Mrs. Mugler, Mr. Pearson, members of the board, Dr. Smith. I'll take a very brief moment tonight to give you an update on our accreditation status. We know that the board is very well-informed, but we want to make sure that the community knows our current status and where to get more information if they need it. I always start with, what does it take to be fully accredited? You all are very familiar with the slide that SOL performance in all four core areas is absolutely critical, as well as for our high schools, having a certain graduation and completion index. This is what it takes to be fully accredited, and up until this year, you could be accredited or not. You are either accredited or in warning. And so, the State Department of Education and the State Board really wanted to recognize schools who were making gains, as well as schools who were very close to the mark. And so, they gave us a new form of accreditation this year, partial accreditation in two different categories, schools who were very close, within two points of the pass rate necessary for full accreditation, or those who were making specified gains. And there's a rather complicated formula, but the bottom line of it is, the more students that are struggling in a school, the more gain they have to make. As they get closer to the mark, the increments get smaller. And so, when it came before you in November, this was our status. We had 12 schools who were fully accredited, and then four schools who were partially accredited with that narrow margin. We had two of them that were one point away, and another two that were two percentage points away of full accreditation. And then, I told you at that time that we had 13 schools who had not met either of those categories, and so, they were warned, but five of them, because they were in their third year, we had made application to the state for conditional accreditation at that point. Last Thursday, the State Board of Education held its meeting, and a recommendation and a decision was made in four of the five schools that we put forward that were to be determined in November. So, this is our current picture. Of course, we haven't changed that, we have 12 fully accredited, and then four partially accredited, close to the mark, but we have eight schools that are partially accredited in warning, that you knew. And for the applications that were heard last Thursday, we had two that were accepted, and we had two that were not, they were denied. And then, one school yet to be determined, that school has made significant gains, so we anticipate a positive outcome, but that will not come about until next month. So, we wanted to make sure that everyone knew what this meant, because we applied for conditional accreditation, but the actual title that comes back is that you are partially accredited, you are a reconstituted school. And so, for the two applications that were approved, this is the status of the school now. It was formally conditionally accredited, and the state recognized that schools who were making the gains that were necessary were typically making some rather large changes in one of three areas, originally four. A typical one is changing the instructional program, another one is changing school leadership, either the actual people doing the leader, the leading, or the structure, say a board or in collaboration. And then, there's a third way to restructure, and that is moving people in and out of the school. You can reconstitute by moving vast numbers of students to the school or out, or you can switch out staff members. And the state said, any combination of those things, they will look at, but when you look at the state superintendent's recommendation to the Board of Education, virtually every school that was recommended for approval, it was based on data that showed progress, an acceptable amount of progress for the state. So, for schools whose application was not approved, they go into a status of accreditation denied, and we have two schools there. And what this means is that we will work more closely with the State Board of Education and the Department of Education to improve the outcomes for students in those schools. We will enter into a binding memorandum of understanding with them, and the samples that we see, and the ones that have been approved, that are out there on the State Board of Education's board docs, show us that the typical things that we need to include is an approved corrective action plan, it has to spell out who's going to do professional development, who's going to receive professional development, and then, key things are, how are we going to monitor the implementation of the corrective action plan and report back to the state, as well as how are we going to monitor student progress and report that back to the state? So, those are really the four major things that we will enter into an agreement with them, and I'm sure that we will give you additional information as we form those plans. There is an excellent document that the state actually provides for parents of students or for neighbors of students who go to a school whose accreditation has been denied, and that is available on the state website. But there are additional pieces of information that we've supplied on our website, on the front page of our website, under news in the right column, it tells you that we have two schools that have had their accreditation denied, and then, what that means, and there is a link to additional documents at the state that folks might find helpful and reassuring. And I'll be glad to entertain any questions that you may have at this point.
The link is also to that document?
It is. That's included on our web brief, gives you more information about our local situation, but then also gives you a link to that document, and it's located in board docs adjacent to tonight's presentation. For anyone watching who wished to download it, we've supplied it there as well.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from board members for Dr. Cooper? Okay. Thank you very much for bringing us up to date on that. Dr. Smith?
Yes, Madam Chair, we'll have Mrs. Scott, our Deputy Superintendent for Operations and Support, who will come forth and provide a financial report.
Good evening, Mrs. Mugler, Mr. Pearson, Dr. Smith, and members of the board. I'm here with the final presentation for the evening, and that is to give a summary of our financial position as of December 31, 2015. At that point, we had revenues totaling $85,276,585, and expenditures and encumbrances totaling This is based on a budgeted March ADM of 19,700 students, but as you know, our fall membership came in a little bit higher than expected, so we revised our March ADM projections, and we're now projecting an additional 82 students. That results in anticipated additional revenue of $423,000. However, that is only based on the additional enrollment. Any other fluctuations in our revenue are not included in that, and some of those impacts may not be known until closer to the end of the school year. We also included in the report, as we've been doing on a monthly basis, the transfers to and from category nine. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions for Ms. Scott? Crystal clear?
All right.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Smith?
Yes, Madam Chair, that concludes superintendent and staff reports.
Thank you. We move on to the hearing of delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Bowers, I don't have any forms. No, no speakers tonight. Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to items for action. We begin with minutes of the school board meeting of January 20, and minutes of the -- we'll start with minutes, I'm sorry. Minutes of the school board meeting of January 20. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, move approval of action item 6.01.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Henry that we approve the minutes of the school board meeting of January 20, 2016. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye, of state.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye, motion carries. Our next item for action is the minutes of the called school board meeting of January 27. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Pearson that we approve the minutes of the closed school board meeting of January 27. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Harper?
Of state.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye, motion carries. Next item on action is the certification of the closed session for January 20. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of action item 6.03.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Henry that we approve the certification of the closed session of January 20, 2016. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the roll?
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Of state.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye, motion carries. Beginning with item 6.04, and carrying out through item 6.12, we have revisions of school board policy that have been presented to us in deliberation first read, and also in deliberation. Is there a motion to approve those revisions in block?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve the revision of school board policy IKA, grading scale, the revision of school board policy IKC, high school class rank and course weight, revision of school board policy IKF, standards of learning tests and graduation requirements, the revision of school board policy IGB, alternative course completion, the revision of school board policy LEB, advanced course courses for credit, the revision of school board policy JED, attendance policy, the revision of school board policy GCBDK, sick leave bank, the revision of school board policies GCBDJ, leave donation and transfer, and GCBDJ-r, leave donation and transfer guidelines, and finally, the revision of school board policy GBEA, workers' compensation leave. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye, motion carries. We move on to deliberation, beginning with item 7.01, which is the Communications Site Utility Easement License Agreement at Barron Elementary School. Utility Easement License Agreement at Barron Elementary School. This has been... Excuse me, I'm tongue tied. It's been presented to the board in our prior...
We had a similar one at another site.
Thank you. Okay, we had a similar one, so this is different. So Ms. Reeves, would you like to present some information to us on this particular easement?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is a request for... From Lumos to put fiber optic cable added at the cell tower site at Barron Elementary. And it simply enhances the ability of that cell tower site to provide cell tower service to not only the underlying site power holder, but all of the co-locates there. They will have a much broader spectrum to provide that cell tower service to their multiple customers with the fiber optics. And so we are now, as fiber optics go in on our sites, we are charging.
That was going to be my next question. Are there questions from board members on this easement? Okay, there being none, this will move forward to our action item for next meeting on the 17th of February. Item 7.02 is Dominion Virginia Power easement at Burbank Elementary School. Ms. Reeves?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is a... An easement for Virginia Power to put one of its cables through to one of its transformers at Burbank Elementary School. That easement, and that has actually been there for a while. It was simply actually cut during some work this summer, and at that time, there was some research done and realized that the easement needed to be actually officially put in place, and that's what this is.
Okay. Any questions from board members on this particular easement for Burbank? So it's a result of some of the work that had been done, their need to go in and make some improvements?
Well, correct. On almost every one of our school sites, if Dominion is supplying us our power, there are easements for their varying power cables. In this particular case, for that particular cable that goes to a particular transformer at Burbank, that easement, for whatever reason, was never obtained from you all. So we're making it official.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any questions from board members on that? Thank you, Ms. Reeves. The remaining deliberation items have to do with the review of or revision of policy. Actually, we have the review of school board policy DM, which is cash in school buildings. The policy was presented to us in deliberation first read. Are there any questions or deliberative items for board members on this particular policy? Okay, we'll move on to revision of school board policy DC, which is the fund balance policy, was presented to us in first read last meeting on January 20. Any questions or additional deliberation? Item 7.05 is the review of school board policy DN, disposal of surplus school property. Again, presented to us in deliberation first read at our last gathering of this board. Are there any additional questions or comments for deliberation on this policy? Okay, and the next policy revision under deliberation is school board policy DGC, school board activity funds. Any additional questions or comments regarding the revision proposed for this particular And finally, in deliberation, we have the revision of school board policy EFB, free and reduced price food services formerly known as food and nutrition services. Are there any deliberative items to discuss further on this particular proposal for revision? If not, then that concludes our deliberation, and we move on to deliberation first read. We have nine items on for first read tonight. We'll start out with 8.01, which is the revision of policy GCB, instructional staff contracts. And I know that Ms. Ruth is here to present to us on these policies. Actually, are all these... Well, most of them are yours.
Until we get to the rights and responsibilities.
The first six. So I'm going to let you start with GCB and work your way all the way down.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, and the first policy that we're going to take a look at is GCB, instructional staff contracts. Very minor changes here. The most significant change is we are deleting the language in the first paragraph stating that contracts will be signed in duplicate. We are now using electronic contracts. So there's no longer a need for a physical signature. So that is the biggest change. There's also some change to the titles of cross-references.
Okay. Any questions for clarification for Ms. Ruth on this particular policy change? There being none?
Okay. Next policy is GCI-R, formerly called voluntary transfers and reassignment. We have dropped the voluntary because not all of the transfers are necessarily voluntary. So it's more inclusive. The changes are revised to reflect our current practice. And some of it is just shifting where things are in the policy. There was a separate section for involuntary transfers, and it has been combined now so that that language is included in involuntary transfers and reassignment. And then the rest of it is cleaning up language to be consistent with other policies rather than referring to principle. We have been trying to standardize everything to say building administrator slash department head. And that is really... Those are the changes for GCI-R.
Any questions for clarification? Okay.
All right. Next policy is GCBE, which is our policy on holidays. And the only change that we have made here is the... We're changing out Easter Monday to spring break Monday. For many, many years, Easter or spring break was always the week after Easter, and 12-month employees would have that Monday of spring break off. Several years ago, we went to a standardized spring break schedule so that it's always the first full week in April. We continued with the practice of employees and students still having that Easter Monday off regardless of when spring break was. That tradition has stopped, and so now 12-month employees will again get that first Monday in spring break off, but it's no longer tied to Easter, so we just changed the language.
Okay. Any other questions for clarification on holidays? Okay?
Okay. Our next policy is GCB-R, which is teacher contract schedules. And the number of days that teachers are contracted to teach remains the same. We are just adjusting how some of those days are divided out. We had listed three days for professional development, but if you look at the bullet prior to that, we had always listed 11 days for activities such as teaching, in-service training, conferences, planning. So it was a little redundant, so we have just added the two together, put 14 days under activities such as teaching, in-service training, conferences, et cetera, and we're eliminating the one that's specific to professional development.
Okay. Any questions for clarification on contract schedules? Okay.
Next policy is GDBB. There are some substantial changes in this policy. This is probably the most complicated policy that... Or most complicated changes that we're adding. These changes are being added so that we are compliant with both the Fair Labor Standards Act, which this policy has always been in compliance with that, but we're also now adding some language that makes us compliant with ACA. And while we have been in practice, we haven't had it codified in our policy, so now we're putting it into policy. And they don't always match in terms of what you can do in one piece of legislation versus what you can do in the other. So we are changing the criteria for who is eligible for secondary assignments. Only full-time exempt employees will be able to work regularly scheduled secondary assignments. For instance, I'm a teacher during the day, and I tutor at night, or I'm a homebound instructor at night. Those assignments will be able to continue with absolutely no changes. And the next set of changes are with our part-time and temporary employees. Part-time... Well, and another change is actually with the full-time non-exempt employees, they are no longer able to hold secondary assignments unless they happen to be a 10 or an 11-month employee. If I'm a 10 or an 11-month employee, I can hold a secondary assignment during those breaks. So for instance, if I'm a secretary two and I only work 10 months, but my principal needs me to fill in for the secretary three when she's on vacation in July, then I can go ahead and do that as a secondary assignment. But I cannot work a secondary assignment during the school year, only during official school breaks. And then when we move on to part-time and temporary employees, whether they are exempt or non-exempt, that piece doesn't matter, they are not... They are only eligible to work secondary assignments during official school breaks. So again, during the regular school year, no secondary assignments. And an additional caveat, if they work an additional job during, say, summer break, then they cannot exceed 25 hours in a work week. Their hours must be 25 or less. And those are most of the big changes. We have also added language that part-time and temporary employees are not eligible for supplemental positions. And that's it. Questions? You may need some time to digest all of these changes.
It is a lot of changes. Are there questions, Ms. Henry?
I guess my question has to do with non-exempt employees and supplemental positions such as coaching.
Full-time non-exempt employees can hold supplemental positions. For example, coaching. Part-time non-exempt employees, or part-time exempt employees for that matter, cannot hold supplemental positions. We can't for ACA purposes, they cannot work over 25 hours in a week.
I was going to say, yeah. Because we get into all that accounting for fair labor standards.
No.
ACA.
For ACA.
Okay. One gets you the other one.
I get... Yes.
So there is a limitation on the number of hours a non-exempt employee can work.
A part-time non-exempt employee, yes, ma'am. The limit for part-time employees is 25 hours per week.
Okay. Full-time non-exempt employees?
Well, technically, you can work... They can work as many hours in the week as you'd like, so long as you pay them for all hours worked.
Right.
We try to restrict them to whatever their standard schedule is, and the courts have determined that supplemental positions are not counted towards work... Hours worked for FLSA purposes. So we can now have non-exempt employees working in coaching roles and pay them with a supplement, and we're fine.
Good. Because that was an issue for a long time.
It was an issue for many, many years, but within the last five years, one of the local courts has... Well, it's not even... One of the federal courts under which we fall determined that non-exempt employees could work coaching positions. It's within the last five years, Nancy?
Oh, yeah, two years, maybe.
Two, three?
Fourth Circuit decided.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions on policy GDBB? On the job assignments? Okay, moving on to your last one, then we have a couple more.
My last policy? This one is also relatively simple. A couple of, again, changes to make language consistent. The one change that is new and not grammar-related is in the third bullet. We have added the line that employees are not to include individual message lines on any HCS media that expresses a political or religious idea. For instance, we have a lot of folks, and I'm included, in their... In my email, I have a standard closing line. It's just my name, my phone number, my email address, and every child, every day, whatever it takes. And that goes out on every email that I send. What we're proposing with this policy is that employees not be allowed to express either political or religious ideas in those taglines. For instance, I cannot put Donald Duck for president on my tagline for Betty Boop or anybody else, nor can I promote any specific religion in my tagline.
Any questions about that? Mr. Pearson?
Yes, Ms. Ruth.
Yes.
The last paragraph of that policy, you'll find the last paragraph of that policy.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the first statement is pretty clear. It says, and I'm asking for clarification, the first statement is pretty clear, it says teachers may not provide religious instruction.
Correct.
And that is to be understood that no teacher of any discipline or content area can provide religious instruction.
Correct.
But when it goes on to further state that they may teach about religion, including the Bible and other scripture, history of religion. Now, for some of us, the assumption there is that for a socialist that is teacher, if it's part of the curriculum...
Correct.
...that's permissible. Can that be misinterpreted, that a science teacher can teach about religion in that context?
If it is part of the standardized curriculum, yes, I would defer to Dr. Cagiano. My guess is there's not much about religion in any of our science curriculums, and all of our teachers should be following the curriculum as set forth by Hampton City Schools.
Okay.
So the caveat is, if it's in the curriculum, you can teach it. If it's not, you need not teach it.
And I agree, it should be stated that way.
We can certainly look at revising that language so it's a little more specific.
Any other questions or comments for clarification on this staff participation in political religious activities? Okay, there being none, we'll move on to our two final policies on deliberation first read, beginning with policy JF, our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook Code of Student Conduct, excuse me. Ms. McKeithen, how are you?
I'm fine. Good evening, Madam Chair and Vice Chair, and Dr. Smith and members of the board. This evening, I am before you with two policies. The first policy I will address is actually policy JF, which is our Student Code of Conduct. And while we will be presenting recommended changes a little later, I will tell you in the policy itself, there are a few recommended changes, and they are very simple. What we have done for the actual policy JF is simply added a link in order for students and families to be able to access the Student Code of Conduct. That is the only change for that particular policy. That is the only change for that particular policy.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. McKeithen on this particular revision proposal? And, and then, I might have had my items reversed on one document, and then, I, yeah, it was different on the chart than it is on the actual agenda. But the next policy you have is with regard to electronic devices?
Yes, that is correct. That's Policy JP. Policy JP addresses electronic devices. And where we have typically in the past allowed students or asked students to not utilize their cellphones in the school buildings before and after school, the recommendation is now that we revise the policy to have students to be allowed to utilize their cellphones before school, outside of the building. But after school, they actually could utilize it inside the building. We've had a lot of issues with students having a need to do so for after-school activities, and we realized that it would not be too intrusive and wouldn't necessarily interrupt the educational environment. And so that is something we thought was fair and reasonable.
Are there any questions for clarification from board members on that particular proposal? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes our deliberation first read.
Right.
I'm sorry. The whole, excuse me. You talked about rights and responsibilities briefly, so I'm sorry. I thought that you, that's all you were gonna say about it. So pardon me.
Unfortunately, not. I actually have the entire handbook, but we will make this very quick and painless because I am going to highlight the recommended changes. As many of you are aware, we have a stakeholder committee that convenes annually to address any concerns with regard to our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. This year, the committee met, and the committee consists of students, parents, as well as administrators. And we meet several evenings during the year to look at recommended changes or any concerns that administrators, students, or parents might bring to that forum for discussion with regard to the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. This year, I am pleased to announce that the committee did not have a great deal of recommended changes. However, we do have a few that were brought to our attention from various stakeholders. Those consist of, and we will, I will address those more specifically when I get to that section of the handbook. So I will tell you that, to summarize those, we actually talked about truancy. We talked about adding a code of conduct to address sexual assault and battery. And we also talked somewhat about looking at category three offenses that right now our policy suggests that we automatically give students 10 days. And so what we found is that we're actually really creating a great deal of difficulty for our students who might engage in one of those offenses, and they would get an automatic 10 days. And it's real difficult to recover academically when we do that automatic 10 days. So what we've done, we look at always surrounding division policies and try to devise something that we believe is fair and certainly meets the needs of the Hampton community, but also looking at the surrounding communities to see what their policies say with regard to those issues. So we will start, and to have you follow me, the hard copies that you have before you, I'm going to, I highlight them by page number. Page five, we have added an online parent access link update. The current link in the handbook is not accurate, and so we've updated that. Then, on pages 13 and 14, which is under our technologies policy, that policy actually starts on page 12, but the only changes to this entire section is to bring clarity and to reflect the current terminology for many of the items in this particular policy. For example, we have, in the old policy, used the word identify certain problems. Now we changed the language to encounter, when you encounter a problem. We used to say the user, and we were a bit more personable with the language now, using the term students. Those are the ones that we are actually referencing in this policy. So these were recommendations from John Eagle. Moving on to page 14 and 15, because we now are fortunate enough to provide students with several electronic devices, we felt it necessary to give them some parameters and outline the expectations for use of those devices. So what we have done is added an entire section on Hampton City Schools issued electronic devices. On pages 15 and 16, I was quite surprised, I often will send out emails because, because while I am the owner of Policy JF and the handbook, I'm certainly not the expert in all of the different areas that are included in our handbook. So I often reach out to the various departments for recommendations for any policies that might need to be reflected in the handbook from their departments. I received from our school nurse coordinator, Ms. Glory Gill, a recommendation to add to the language in the electronic device policy to allow students to utilize their cellphones during the school day when it is medically necessary. And so I had the actual policy review committee to say, when would that be necessary? Well, it is my understanding that the current trend is that in some cases of diabetes, that there are these advanced pumps that are available that actually are synced with the cellphone that tracks a student's levels. And so if indeed there are prescriptions, though, that will be required for students who might need that. And so when a physician prescribes that, we certainly don't want to prevent a student from needing to utilize that. So we just thought we would add that language to the end of each of those different policies. That brings us to page 16. Page 16, under Bring Your Own Device, again, there are a few words that have been changed to reflect more current terminology. Like there was some reference to certain 3G. Technology changes so frequently. Mr. Eagle had some great recommendations that would always keep us up to date. So instead of trying to keep up with KIC and Facebook and all of these different things, he just talks specifically about using language that would be general enough that when they come up with a new one, we wouldn't have to constantly change the policy. Okay? Pages 22 and 23 reflects the next group of changes. And we had nine, oh, 11, I'm sorry, 11 rules, safety rules for the bus. And there were several changes to many of those 11 rules. So instead of making it complicated, we struck all 11 and just simply added the 15 that are there. Some of them are very, are very similar, but we just thought it would be easier and cleaner to strike all of those 11 rules and just add the 15. There were some circumstances that arose this past year that transportation felt it was necessary to bring clarification for some families about expectations with regard to the school bus.
So of those 15 items, can you point out to us those that are newer?
Yes, the last, first of all, certainly the last four. Number two, let me pull that up.
Ms. McKeithen?
Yes.
Perhaps I can help?
Sure.
Dr. Smith issued with, in conjunction with the Transportation Department, a pamphlet recently to parents that had the to-dos and not-to-dos on the bus. And they wanted many of those bullets to be added to this, but they were not able to be added just because they didn't even read correctly. So what happened is I took every one of those bullets and wove them into these other 11 and merged them together.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So that it was readable?
Yes.
Thank you, Nancy. Yes. And so the next one is on page 25, under absence verification. There were several recommendations with regard to the truancy policy. However, the policy review committee felt that we need to go back and to further research some of the unintended consequences and implications for those recommendations. And so the only one that we are bringing forward today is on page 25, is when a student is absent from school, the expectation is that they provide written or verbal notification from the parent within two school days of returning to school. And the reason for that is sometimes we have, it's February, and we have students that are just bringing in verification from absences back in September and October. And so we need to make sure we provide that information in a timely manner in order to accurately record those absences, because without that verification, those students' absences are actually considered unexcused. The next one is also under the attendance policy. It's on page 28. We struck the language that currently requires school staff to complete a corrective action plan for students who reach the fifth tardy. And the reason for that is while we believe attendance is important for students to get to school every day and on time, and to class every day on time, to have a policy that would mandate a corrective action plan, the volume of students that reach that level, it is virtually, is very difficult, if not impossible, to do so by the fifth. And in policy, it's important that we do exactly what the policy says. So we're not able to meet that demand. And so while we feel that attendance is very important, and we are definitely going to continue to work with those students, what we've done is changed the language from the fifth to excessive, excessive tardies. And so that's not tying us to the fifth, but the administration and those in the schools dealing with attendance will certainly meet with those families to address those tardies, but certainly not be tied to that fifth tardy. The next recommended change is on page 29. Page 29 has, it continues with our attendance policy. And so we had information under the attendance policy about exams and AP exams. And so we felt like that information was certainly important and relevant, but we found a new home for it. So we removed it out of that section, and I will reference where it is a little bit later. As a matter of fact, it's the very next one, on page 30, 31, and 32. We have a grading system policy, which is Policy IKA, that was addressed earlier this evening. That's some very valuable information that we believe that our families really need to know, the students as well as the parents, how their students are graded. And so, like many other things that exist in the handbook, we felt it necessary to include that information. And so we, that policy includes what was struck earlier with regard to AP exams and things like that. So we have actually included that policy and added it to the handbook. We're getting there. Page 41. Page 41 talks about jurisdiction of the school board. We felt it necessary to use some language that would further clarify for our families what is considered school property. Previously, we did not indicate, we think it's important that when students are going to and from school, that we added the language directly, because many students take detours, that we have no control over where they are, we don't provide the supervision, and oftentimes we are expected to be held accountable for things that might happen when they detour. And we are not in a position to do that. So we thought we would look very clearly at defining for our students and our families what is considered school property and what is exactly our jurisdiction. And so when students are on their natural direct path to and from school, then we are including that. We also struck that it does not include travel in a personal vehicle or mode of transportation before entering or leaving school property. So that language was added as well. Now we are moving on to the actual Student Code of Conduct. The first change is reflected on page 45, which falls under the destruction or defacement of property intentional. We have added language to clarify, we currently have language that says public property, and there was a concern expressed by someone who has had a lot of school items damaged or destroyed, that in their discussions with families and students, they weren't clear about public property. So we decided to add and to clarify that by saying public slash school property. And we gave examples, to include examples of musical instruments, calculators, furniture, athletic equipment. So people would be very clear about what is considered school property. Page 46, disorderly conduct. That's a category two offense. Before, we had some language under a category three offense of fighting that would actually hold a student who might be cheering on or encouraging or videoing a fight as accountable as the actual combatants. Having that fall under category three, where those students who were engaged in a fight would get the automatic 10 days, we decided to reduce that to a category two, while we still find it unacceptable. We decided to reduce that from a category three to a category two, certainly wanting to discourage the cheering on and participating in fights in general. We felt to hold the students who were doing so equally responsible as the combatants was a bit excessive. Also, on page 46, under technology equipment, vandalism slash destruction, it's a category two offense. We added some language that would include inappropriate use of the internet, district networks, and bulletin boards. The policy starts on page 46, but the actual change is on page 47. And I see some nods that would suggest that you're following me. Great. On page 48, our category three offenses, we have assault and battery simple. We've added some language to include sexual assault and battery, and we've also defined that using language directly from the Code of Virginia, so we could clearly define that. So you may ask, why do you need to do that? Well, we have found that sexual assaults in general are on the rise, and the police department find the sexual assault to be a bit more egregious and more serious than a basic assault and battery. So while we have a policy that clearly talks about sexual assault and battery So while we have a policy that clearly talks about sexual assault and battery, we did not have anything in the code of conduct to separate that out, and so we felt that we needed to do so. And so we've added a category for our category three and defined what that looks like in terms of a violation. We have also, under the category three, where I referenced earlier, fighting, we struck the language, again, that would hold the students who are cheering on. We put that back to a category two, so we struck that out of the category three, fighting. On page 50, we are continuing the category three disciplinary actions. At the pre-K and elementary level, we combine, looking at that chart, we combined the first and second violation in terms of consequences, because they're potentially the same consequences. And it will depend on the severity of the action, whether you would get a phone call home or a couple of days at the elementary level. For the secondary schools, we changed the first violation from an automatic 10-day that you heard me reference earlier to five days for the first offense. We then changed the second offense, which was also 10 days, to seven days. So we have these graduated sanctions, and then the third offense is actually 10 days. But there's also language in there that talks about a third offense in the category three, that it will result in a recommendation for long-term suspension, and we decided to change that language to may. It may result in a recommendation for long-term suspension. And finally, the category four offenses, we added a separate category, again, under category four, as we did for category three, for sexual assault and battery. We added aggravated sexual assault and battery. And we, again, defined that using language from the Code of Virginia. And then finally, under the category five offenses, we added, under major crimes, again, just keeping in line with, identifying the sexual assault or offenses, we added to include rape. And that would conclude the recommended changes for the student code of conduct, rights and responsibilities handbook.
Thank you, Ms. McKeithen. Are there any questions for clarification from board members?
Yeah, I guess I do.
And we'll take this up for deliberation at our next meeting.
The, on page 50, the violation is specified. It's not a range. Is that correct? Is that how I'm reading that?
On page?
Page 50?
On page 50.
First violation is five days, second violation is seven days.
Yes, yes. There's not a range. It is five, because before it was 10. There wasn't a range.
I know. I just, that one I'm going to have to deliberate a lot about, because fighting is a serious issue.
It is. It absolutely is.
There's some other things in this category that I could live with a lesser range, but I have parents say to me all the time, my daughter just came home and said, da-da-da, there was a fight, and that, it's huge, and we have to really get kids' attention. And you know me, my other thing is I'd like to have something where we demand counseling for kids who are in the first fight before they get to the second one, before they get to the third, but that's another issue.
Okay, okay.
I will just meditate for a bit about that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Any other questions for clarity? There being none, we will move on to informational items. The next regular meeting of the Hampton School Board will be held on January 17 at 6:30 PM at the Rupert Sargent Building, 1 Franklin Street. Meetings with an emphasis on the FY 1617 budget will be held on March 2, 9, 16, 23, and 30. Public hearings on the budget will be held on March 16 and 23. All meetings will be held at 6:30 PM, and they will all be here at Jones Magnet Middle Other items for information, Dr. Smith?
Madam Chair, no further business from the superintendent.
Okay. Any other items from?
Just for clarity, it's February 17 is our next meeting. It was just a missed.
What did I say?
January.
Okay. Sorry about that. It will be February. I haven't flipped the page on my calendar yet, I guess.
I do want to just make a couple of comments tonight in regard to today having been National Signing Day, and across the country, many young people signed on with a variety of colleges and universities to play a variety of sports at that level, and Hampton was no exception. We had, I believe, I counted, 17 students from this school division who signed with a variety of colleges and universities, if you'll indulge me, because I think it's really incredible for these young people. At Kickitane High School, J C Onfugate for football at UNC Charlotte. Also at Kickitane, Tyler Christ, football, William &amp; Mary. Caleb Tucker, football, Virginia Military Institute. Casey Coleman, women's soccer, Shawan University. Damian Nolan, men's basketball, Hampton University. So all those children were from Kickitane High School. Moving on to Hampton High School, Javon Quillen, football, Virginia Tech. At Bethel, we have Terry Chisley, football, Hampton University. And at Phoebus High School, all football, Elijah Nelson, Hampton University. Marlon Carter, Delaware State. Tyquan Johnson, UVA Wise. Daquan Lewis, Alderson-Broddus. Trey Hamel, Lewisburg College. And Jeffrey Matthews, The Apprentice School. So just a shout out to those young people. Very proud of them. If there is no further business to come before this board, I will entertain a motion from Mr. Pearson.
Yes. Pursuant to section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the employment evaluation of a division employee, which is authorized by section 2.2-3711A 1 of the Code of Virginia.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Pearson and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we convene in a closed session for the purpose of discussing division personnel and employment and evaluation. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call the vote?
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We'll convene in a closed session in three minutes. Otherwise, this public meeting is adjourned.